Good morning, everyone. Good morning. The public hearing is now called order. We're starting a little late, I apologize for that. It's Title V. Today is Monday, November 17, 2014. We are here today for a hearing on a proposal to amend in Section 207.5 of Article 207 of the New York City Health Code. The amendment would eliminate the requirement that a person requesting a change to the gender marker on their birth certificate present approval for convertive surgery before being issued a new birth certificate. In addition, the Department is proposing that Board of Health eliminates the requirement that a person requesting such a correction also change their name. I am Thomas Merrill, General Counsel for the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Here with me today are Gretchen Van Wee, sitting immediately to my right, who is the Assistant Commissioner of the Bureau of Bio-Statistics of the Department, and Stephen Schwartz at the end of the table, is the New York City Register. Purpose of today's hearing is to elicit public comments and information to assist the Board of Health in determining whether to adopt this proposal. A notice of intention and notice of public hearing regarding the proposal was published in the City Record on October 14 of this year. A copy of the first page of the notice of intention has been provided to the reporter to include in the record. Persons wishing to speak at the public hearing are asked to preregister. I will call upon those who have preregistered in the order that you have registered with caveat that the elected officials will -- if we're not yet here, you're going to get fun when they show up. They will be called ahead of you. That's when they're trying to put something in the elected office. But other than that, you will be called in the order that you will be signed up. After the last registered person has spoken, I will call upon any persons who missed their turns, and anyone who hasn't registered, may register now at the table, and if time allows, up until two hour mark. This hearing is scheduled to go from Title V, AM, to 12:05. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. I'm keeping it on my iPad. We will give you a 30-second warning if you get up to the 4:30 mark. We have 13 speakers registered to speak at this moment. I will now -- the first two registered speakers were Assemblyman Gottfried and Councilmember Johnson. Okay, yes, okay. And I just betoke that Assemblyman Gottfried has arrived, so we're going to start with them. I apologize for not seeing you in the first row.
Is this on?
Give the button.
Okay, thank you. Well, good morning. My name is Richard Gottfried. I chair the Assembly Committee on Health. I appreciate this opportunity to testify in support of the Department's proposed amendment to the City Health Code to eliminate the onerous and clinically inappropriate requirements for corrective surgery for a transgender person seeking to amend the gender marker on a birth certificate issued by New York City. I urge the Board of Health to adopt the proposal with two modifications that I will mention. One of those modifications is not in my written testimony, which I brought copies of with me, but when I get back to the office, I will add that modification and email it in. This action would follow a similar action by the New York State Department of Health in June, which allows birth certificates issued outside of New York City to be amended after demonstrating, quote, "appropriate medical treatment." For many transgender New Yorkers, a major obstacle to fully exercising their personhood is the inability to obtain official documentation. Birth certificate, driver's license, passport, et cetera, certification of their gender, certifying their gender appropriately. Lacking official documentation of a person's gender can, among other things, effectively block access to employment, or appropriate health care, or coverage for care. Many transgender people do not seek surgical transition, either because it is prohibitively expensive for them, or because they do not desire it. The American Medical Association explicitly states that transgender people should not need to have surgery in order to obtain a corrected birth certificate. The proposed regulation is significantly superior to the state regulation. Under the city-proposed regulation, a birth certificate will be corrected on the certification that it is, quote, "in keeping with contemporary expert standards regarding gender identity." The state regulation requires a demonstration that the person has received, quote, "appropriate medical treatment," unquote. The city's proposed standard is more respectful of individuals and better reflects the reality of their varied circumstances. It is appropriate that the proposed regulation authorizes a broad range of health professionals to make the certification under the proposed amendment. This is not only within the education and training of a physician, especially considering the standard that the proposed amendment adopts. I would note that the bill before the City Council would include social workers. The proposed regulation does not. I had not focused on that difference when I was drafting this testimony. I think it is appropriate and important that social workers be added. In addition, some of the professionals listed work within particular areas of specialty. Therefore, it would be appropriate to add to the regulation reference that the professional be acting within his or her lawful scope of practice. That would probably be the implication of the professional statute, but I think it would make sense to refer to that in the regulations, just so everyone understands what the rules are. I applaud Commissioner Bassett for helping to ensure that transgender people who were or are or will be born in New York City will have a more full opportunity for a more full life. Thank you. Thank you.
Next registered is Councilmember Johnson. I don't believe he's here yet, so we're going to go to number three. But remember, you're on the list. When Councilmember Johnson shows up, people will attempt to jump you. Next person in line is Michael Silverman.
Good morning.
Okay. We'll then move on to number four, which is Patricia Harrington. Oh. Jessica.
Hi. Thanks for having me. My name is Patricia Harrington, and I am a plaintiff in the transgender legal defense and education fund lawsuit challenging the current New York City requirement that transgender people undergo surgery on updating their birth certificates. I'm a transgender woman who was born and raised in Queens. Growing up in the 50s, I knew that early on I was at risk for simply being myself. When I was five years old, I was sent to a summer day. They told the girls to go to one group and the boys to go to another. I went with the girls. The camp counselors came and dragged me over to the boys. They proceeded to severely harass me in front of everybody. Ended up being subjected to such bullying that my arm became infected, for one of the boys repeatedly giving me a friction burn. My family saw my arm, and they pulled me out of the camp. I learned then that it was dangerous to be who I am, so I spent the next 40 years hiding who I was. When that eventually became unbearable, I started exploring the option of transitioning. I undertook the appropriate medical and legal steps that I have been living happily as myself for the last 13 years. In 2010, I moved to New Jersey, and I had to get a new driver's license. I had had a female New York driver's license for the prior decade, but when I tried to get a female New Jersey driver's license, I was turned away. That happened because I had to present my New York City birth certificate, which I had been unable to get corrected because of its discriminatory surgery requirements. Then I had to jump through hoops to get my doctor to fill out a special form, which I then had to take back to the New York State, New Jersey DMV. While I was able to get my license, it was a frustrating and unnecessary experience that made me think twice about ever moving again. It's been a long journey for me to be myself and not worry about what other people think. While I'm proud to be a transgender woman, I should be able to live my life just like everyone else and not have to face challenges for the rest of my life. I transitioned 13 years ago, but incidents like this bring back all the memories of continually being told there's something wrong with who I am. There's nothing wrong with who I am, and I would just like my birth certificate to reflect that. I hope that the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene will amend Section 207.05, Article 207 of the New York City Health Code, and change this harmful policy once and for all. Doing so will improve the lives of transgender people. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go to number five, who is Marco Wiley. I apologize that I missed your announcement.
Yes, sir. I'll leave you one more.
Good morning.
My name is Marco Wiley, and I'm a plaintiff in transgender legal defense and education funds lawsuit challenging the current New York City requirement that transgender people undergo surgery in order to update their birth certificates. I would like to ask all of you to picture the most personal thing about yourself. Something that perhaps you feel terrified to disclose. Something that you would be scared to tell someone for fear of rejection or embarrassment. Now I want you to imagine writing it down in big, bold letters, posting it on the walls of your workplace, in an email sent to everyone you know, and on a T-shirt for everybody to see. That is a glimpse of what my life as a transgender person is like every day. Transitioning is one of the most private things a person can go through. Trans people do not have the luxury of hiding away during this process. Instead, everyone you know gets to watch. I was born May 11, 1985, in New York City, and labeled "female" at birth. I went to an all-girls school right here in the city for 10 years, during which I was taunted, teased, and harassed in many ways by my peers, as well as some of the faculty. As a child, I wore short hair and gender-neutral clothes when I wasn't in my uniform made of tunic and puppy-sleeve blouses. Just being gay at that school was bad enough. People on the street would assume I was a boy until I reached a certain age where it became apparent that I was not. Strangers would stare and taunt; some would even resort to violence. Friends wouldn't hang out with me, let alone even hold my hand, for fear of what others might think of them. I was a very depressed child as a result, and still struggle with depression to this day. At an early age, I saw lots of therapists and doctors, mostly out of my school's request. I was diagnosed with gender identity disorder at the age of eight, and yet nobody spoke to me about it or knew what to do with that label. When I was growing up, I didn't know any trans people. I didn't even know many gay people. It was only until I went to college that I first learned the word transgender, and had a friend who had already transitioned. It terrified me because I felt very similar. I knew that this was something that hit very close to home, and I chose to ignore it out of fear. Growing up, it was so ingrained in my mind that girls who dressed like boys and boys who dressed like girls were somehow shameful and sick. In college, I grew my hair long and began wearing push-up bras and feminine clothes. I tried desperately to be a woman, and even tried to convince myself that I just quite admitted, thus denying myself who I really was. It was only a few years after I graduated that I realized my depression was rooted in the horrible child experiences I had. I began therapy for the first time of my own, and on the first day, sat down on the couch and stared through tears. I'm worried I'm trans, and I don't want to be. It took a long time for me to accept myself and become the strong person I am today. Transitioning is by no means a walk in the park. A lot of trans people experience loss of their family and friends, they're fired from their jobs, addicted from their homes, threatened at times to the point of death. Having a sudden change for trans people would be a major step for human rights. It doesn't make sense that you could change your gender and name on every single form of identification, but not on your birth certificate. People need congruency. Not letting this section of Article 207 be amended will definitely continue the abused trans people experience. You can change so many lives by changing this policy. Requiring people like me to have what is called bottom surgery in order to change their gender on their birth certificates is an unjust thing to ask of anybody. I don't want or need that surgery as part of my transition. Moreover, many people cannot afford the surgery, let alone even pay for therapy or home rooms. To request this is unjust, and it furthers the discriminatory mindset that leads people to harm the trans community. Being who you are is a human right. Much like how people treated the lesbian and gay community in past decades, trans people experience much of the same treatment today. Not allowing people to fully transition by changing all of their documents furthers the injustice that promotes violence and hatred towards us. I hope that my story and the factual information I've discussed helps sway you to understand why this is necessary for people. I just want to make sure that nobody goes through the humiliation of the cruelty that I adore, and amending this section of Article 207 will make a huge difference in making that a reality.
Okay. Next registered person is number six, Naz Sinop.
My name is Naz Sinop. I am 20 years old, a college student, and a transgender man. I am a plaintiff in the transgender legal defense and education fund lawsuit challenging the current New York City requirement that transgender people undergo surgery in order to update their birth certificates. I was born in Queens Village, New York. My parents are immigrants from Vietnam. They wanted their children to have opportunities that they didn't have. They made sure my siblings and I were clothed and had a roof over our heads. They also made sure it was possible for us to get an education. They worked hard to provide us for us, and they succeeded. In just one year, I'll be a first-generation college graduate with a dual bachelor's degree and on my way to a master program. I spent a long time trying to be who I am. Once I was ready, I faced challenges. I came up to a conservative Muslim family, and I shared with many people my true identity. Transitioning was a challenge to me socially, and I lost some people in my life, but I also gained many people in my life. I started my first shot at testosterone on November 29, 2012. After the first shot, I was able to start living my truth and got closer to being and feeling like a whole person. It has been quite an experience, often challenging, but definitely worth the process. After a few months of testosterone, I decided to change my name to fit my gender identity. And along with the name change order, I was able to receive a letter stating that I had undergone medical intervention to transition to male. This letter allowed me to change my gender identity on many of my documents. Problematically, many of the places that I went to change my gender marker were not completely shared protocol. For example, at the DMV, I gave the letter to the teller, and they had to call a supervisor and another person over to figure out what to do. At school, I had to go to the director of registrar's office to get my gender marker changed. After many uncomfortable talks, I was able to get my correct gender on each of my IDs except for my birth certificate. And although we do not use our birth certificate every day as we do our phone IDs, when it comes to certain employment opportunities, we have to present our birth certificates, and that brings forth uncomfortable and unwanted conversations with future employers. There is a forced out of it, and it can feel unsafe sometimes. Many of the awkward conversations that I've had, such as the one at the DMV, Social Security, and at school, could be avoided if my birth certificate matched my gender identity. No one should have to live in fear of harassment and discrimination. That is why I'm asking you to change this discriminatory birth certificate policy. Your actions will make life easier for transgender people like me and countless transgender people who are born in New York City, like all of you who have been on it. Thank you.
Okay. The next registered speaker is number seven, Daniel Shaker.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the proposed amendment to Article 207, Section 207.5, to remove the convertive surgery requirements of transgender birth certificate applicants. My name is Jay Tool, and with me is Daniel Shaker. I am the president of Jay's House, an organization seeking to develop a lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and gender nonconforming friendly homeless shelter in New York City. Jay's House is currently in six adult New York City homeless shelters, running support groups for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and gender nonconforming folks residing there. I am a co-founder of Peers Economic Justice and was the director of a homeless project. In that capacity, I helped with others move the Department of Home Services' rights policy to allow transgender individuals who self-identify into which side of the shelter system, male or female, they wanted to enter. Daniel Shaker is the secretary of Jay's House Board and co-founder of the West Village Trans Legal Club. Being homeless is hard. Being homeless and trans is even harder. Without an accurate birth certificate, housing programs can be biased, and harassment has been spoken about in our support groups ongoing. Too many times over the years, I have heard the horror stories of women being in the shelter system being pulled out of their correct gender identities because of what's on their birth certificates. Staff harasses them, and the residents follow. This could and has made many go back to the streets. This is a health hazard of mind and body. You can alleviate by passing the proposed amendment. Making it easier for transgender individuals to amend their birth certificates to properly reflect their accurate gender is a vital step in allowing them to improve their housing and job situations. We thank all the advocates throughout the years for all their work. We at Jay's House fully support this proposal, and thank you.
If you were number eight, we're now going to go to number nine, Robert Hodgson.
I'm an attorney at the New York Civil Liberties Union. I appear here on behalf of the NYCLU to comment on the Department's proposed amendments to Section 207.305 of Article 207 of the New York City Health Code. The NYCLU is pleased to comment in general support of this proposed rule with one suggested change. This proposal should be brought into alignment with the otherwise identical proposal currently before the New York City Council by adding licensed masters of social work, or LMSWs, to the list of licensed professionals who are authorized to provide the required affidavit in support of an application to correct an individual's gender marker. Overall, this proposed rule offers changes that will help to bring the New York City birth certificate policy in line with modern standards by removing outdated surgical requirements and providing criteria for correcting the birth certificate that more accurately reflect well-established best practices. Our full written comments submitted electronically discuss this issue at length, highlighting the importance of having access to accurate identification documents, and describing the concerns that the current policy poses regarding privacy and discrimination. The proposed rule does contain one deviation from the otherwise identical proposal currently before the New York City Council. It omits LMSWs from the list of licensed professionals authorized to sign an affidavit in support of an application to correct a birth certificate. The NYCLU strongly supports a broad, inclusive list of licensed professionals, including LMSWs, to attest to an applicant's gender identity for the purposes of this application. This proposal rightly includes provisions replacing the surgical requirement of the city's current policy with a more reasonable requirement that the applicant submit an affidavit from one of a comprehensive list of licensed professionals whose training and expertise allow them to confirm that a corrected birth certificate would more accurately reflect the gender of the applicant. That this list of professionals is as comprehensive as possible is vital to ensuring the success of the policy, though, since creating an unnecessarily narrow list of providers would most severely impact those particularly vulnerable individuals who most need accurate identification. Barriers to accessing any one of these providers are a significant concern, since transgender people are often unable to obtain medical and mental health care due to a combination of discrimination, unemployment, and lack of health insurance. Indeed, transgender people are less likely to have health insurance and are more likely to delay medical treatment due to discrimination or inability to pay, and 70% of transgender New Yorkers have been denied medical care simply for being transgender. Thus, any reasonable list of providers should include all those qualified individuals who are the most readily available to a broad range of New Yorkers, including LMSWs. LMSWs serve many of the city's most vulnerable and underserved populations, and as comments submitted from the National Association of Social Workers confirm, it is well within their scope of practice to sign an affidavit in support of an application to correct a gender marker. LMSWs are among the most affordable and accessible service providers for transgender New Yorkers, and their exclusion from this list would create significant, potentially insurmountable barriers for many people attempting to access the benefits of this new and improved policy. In conclusion, we do applaud the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene for your recognition of the need to address this important issue. We generally support these common sense improvements that the proposed rule includes to bring New York City in line with other jurisdictions that have modernized their processes for correcting the birth certificate, and we strongly encourage the Department to amend its proposal to include LMSWs in the final version of the policy.
Thank you. The next registered speaker is number 10, Matthew McMorrow.
Good morning. My name is Matthew McMorrow. I am the manager of government affairs for the Empire State Pride Agenda, a New York statewide LGBT civil rights and advocacy organization. I'm here this morning to express our support for the proposed policy change under consideration, and I would like to thank all of you for convening this hearing. Many of us who are cisgender take for granted the fact that the gender markers on our birth certificates accurately reflect our gender expressions and identities. When we apply for a driver's license, a passport, a job, or housing, we know exactly which gender box to check, and rarely does anyone reading our application question it. This is not the case for transgender people. The vast majority of transgender New Yorkers have inaccurate birth certificates. When you have an identity document that does not match who you are, you become a target for discrimination. Many are accused of fraud or denied service, and many face other burdens and unnecessary administrative hurdles. Four out of 10 transgender people have faced harassment when presenting identity documents that did not match. Many others report being denied entry or asked to leave an establishment, somehow even experienced physical assault due to mismatched IDs. In New York City, and until very recently in New York State, to change gender markers on their birth certificates, transgender New Yorkers are required to provide extensive and very private medical records, including documentation of specific surgeries, a psychological report, and a statement of a physician describing the patient's hormone treatments. Yet many transgender people, for financial, health, or personal reasons, choose not to undergo surgery or hormone therapy. And for those who do, the physical transition process can take years to complete, leaving them without matching identification documents for a very long time. The Pride Agenda, in partnership with the NYCLU, the National Center for Transgender Equality, the Transgender Legal Defense and Education Fund, and the Silvia Rivera Law Project, has been advocating for this policy change for the past several years. On the state level, we work with the Office of Governor Andrew Cuomo to make it a reality for the thousands of New Yorkers who are transgender or gender nonconforming. And as of June 2014, the New York State Department of Health no longer requires proof of gender reassignment surgery or for hormone treatments in order to change one's gender marker on a birth certificate. The amended policy has allowed many transgender New Yorkers to change their gender markers by simply providing a certification from a licensed medical provider stating that the applicant is undergoing appropriate clinical treatment. The policy now reflects current medical best practices and federal precedents, and it brings the process into line with existing protocols as state and federal agencies and departments. As administrator of the New York State LGBT Health and Human Services Network, the Pride Agenda is in close contact with dozens of organizations around the state which are helping transgender clients navigate this new policy, and feedback has been universally positive. Unfortunately, this policy does not apply to transgender people born in New York City, which issues its own birth certificates, and still requires proof of surgery and hormone therapy. New York State, historically several steps behind New York City on important civil rights issues, now has a more progressive policy on this particular one than the city does. One out of every three transgender New Yorkers has been homeless at one time in their lives; two out of three experience discrimination at work; 30% face serious physical or sexual assault. Now, some of this is due to transphobic discrimination within our society, but some is due to institutional barriers, such as the current policy under consideration today. This policy unnecessarily disadvantages transgender New Yorkers from accessing services, obtaining matching identification, and applying for jobs, housing, credit, and obtaining matching identification, and applying for jobs, housing, credit, and insurance coverage, and it's time to remove this barrier. I want to thank Mayor de Blasio, Commissioner Bassett, the entire Board of Health, and all the advocates for moving forward with this proposal. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Corey Johnson for his leadership and advocacy. Changing this policy will have a profound impact on the health, safety, and well-being of transgender New Yorkers, so on behalf of the Empire State Pride Agenda, I respectfully urge this board to support this policy proposal. Thank you.
The next registered speaker is number 11, Carrie Davis.
I was told to bring copies of my testimony, three copies.
It's not a requirement, but you can certainly hand it over.
Oh, sure. Here, you're right.
Okay, one to the speaker.
Are you off? I've included in that the testimony from two individuals who have not yet made very known, who is the parent of a transgender child, and Tiffany Mathieu, who is a transgender woman who was born there in New York City. They're not here to give their testimony, so I will do mine. Good morning. My name is Carrie Davis, and I'm the chief programs and policy officer at New York City's LGBT Community Center, where I've worked since 1998. Please accept my gratitude for this opportunity to address the important issues raised by the Department of Health Mental Hygiene's proposal to amend the New York City Health Code to better address the birth certificate needs of transgender people born in New York City. I've been very fortunate over these last 16 years to collaborate with the city as it struggled, really struggled, step by step, to address the basic needs of transgender New Yorkers. This singular work with the City Council to amend the Human Rights Law in 2002, working with the Commission on Human Rights to develop guidelines for that law, and working with numerous city agencies such as HRA, Department of Corrections, DHS, MIPD, and others to better serve transgender New Yorkers. And since 2004, I've worked in coalition after coalition with advocates, the Board of Health, and now the City Council to allow trans people born in this state to access accurate and affirming birth records. While some trans people have a safe and healthy journey to self-sufficiency and future employment, others are placed at risk by substantial stigma and disruptions, as often cascades to lifelong difficulties with health, education, and employment. Despite the work that's been done so far, invidious cultural stigma still labels trans people as mentally ill, deviant, fraudulent, and as predators. And this forcibly clashes with our lived experiences and negatively impacts our lives at almost every turn. Only one in five trans people has ID that matches their identity, meaning that most are in danger of disclosure of their status, transgender status, every time they apply for a job, housing, or a active police. Trans people are twice the rate of unemployment compared to the average, and nearly all report past harassment or discrimination on the job while trying to hide their identity to avoid it. As a consequence, trans people are nearly four times more likely to have an annual income of under $10,000 than the general population. All of this significantly increases the contact and associated costs trans people have with the homeless, medical, legal systems of this city. Birth certificates are a foundational tool as we seek to address this negative cascade. The National Association for Public Health Statistics notes a birth certificate breeds all others: social security cards, school records, driver's licenses, passports, and employment records. It means citizenship. Having a birth certificate that shows the wrong gender can make doing any of those things difficult or even impossible. When trans people show a certificate with a gender unknown they live in, they may take use of fraud, turned away, harassed, arrested, tabbed, humiliated, and discriminated against. To that end, trans people who deny citizenship to those who are unable to present accurate ID when needed will undoubtedly continue to be harmed. It's not difficult to imagine the resources and waste that is in the frivolous endeavor we don't grasp the opportunity we have before us. Along with responsibility to document these births is to seize responsibility to document them accurately. It's in the best interest of trans New Yorkers and the city of New York to have access to accurate birth records. This duty should never become a barrier to participation in our society. To allow trans people to amend their birth certificates without requiring them to undergo an inaccurate term sex reassignment or convertive surgery is a positive action to address some of the challenges faced by trans New Yorkers as they seek the same privileges and rights that others already enjoy. This long overdue change enhances social and economic opportunities for trans people born in this city and reinforces our commitment to respect and inclusion. It's either radical or unique, and is a common sense step to bring our city in line with modern standards. With that purpose in mind, the list of providers able to give the evidence required in the proposal should be as broad as possible. While the only person that can authentically attest to one's gender is that individual to question themselves, those including the proposed list are all licensed by New York State, and their professional training and expertise allow them to confirm that a corrected birth certificate will accurately represent the gender of an applicant. I'm pacifying support of this proposal with one exception. It's important to add licensed matched to social workers, LMSWs, to this list. Transgender people are often unable to access adequate care due to a combination of discrimination, unemployment, and lack of health insurance. They are also more likely to delay medical treatment due to discrimination and/or inability to pay. Any reasonable list of providers must include those qualified individuals who are most readily available to the broadest range of New Yorkers, in particular LMSWs, whose scope of practice already includes similar attestations and serve many vulnerable underserved New Yorkers, often over extensive periods of time in the ways that make them the most qualified to attest to the accuracy of someone's gender. The scope of practice for LMSWs has been determined by well-known national social work experts, including the National Association of Social Workers and the testimony at City Hall. It is not in dispute. Our mayor said he is committed to building a city where New Yorkers from all five boroughs can start businesses, raise their families, and afford to live in their own neighborhoods. Our trans citizens wish to do the same things. Let us celebrate this as we take a public step forward with the proposed changes with the addition of LMSWs to the list. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to clarify the two written comments that you submitted by this gentleman. I think I wrote the name down, but they'll be considered great comments.
Thank you.
And our next registered speaker is number 12, Elizabeth Cooper.
My name is Cora, and I'm a staff attorney at the New York Legal Assistance Group, Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Law Project. We provide free civil legal services to low-income lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer people throughout the five boroughs. We strongly support the proposed amendments to Section 207.05 of the Health Code. They'll increase access to vital identification for transgender people born in New York City, and they will also bring the city's policy with respect to birth certificate sex designations in line with the medical consensus and increasing number of jurisdictions, including New York State, and the reality of people's lives. As others have testified, transgender New Yorkers experience devastating levels of harassment and violence. Being forced to use inaccurate or mismatched identity documents significantly increases the likelihood that a transgender person will be the target of discrimination. A Nylai client was recently denied emergency medical care by emergency room staff who insisted, after seeing that one of her documents had a male gender marker, that she must be a man just pretending to be a woman, and turned her away entirely. Another client relates that she fears harassment every single time she uses her food stamps because even though she's a woman, her benefit card has a male gender marker. And these are just two examples of a very broad problem. In the National Transgender Discrimination Survey, four out of 10 respondents said that they had been harassed, assaulted, or asked to leave as a result of presenting identity documents that don't match who they are. The vast majority of transgender people born here in New York City have inaccurate birth certificates. Eight out of 10 transgender women and nine out of 10 transgender men have not had the so-called convertive surgery that the 1971 policy requires. Not one single Nylai client who has come to us asking for help to correct or serve her birth certificate has been able to do so under the current policy, and that's largely a result of the requirement for a so-called convertive surgery. If the proposed amendments are enacted, fortunately, most, if not all, of these people will be able to get birth certificates with an accurate sex designation. These birth certificates will be more useful as a form of identification, and as others have testified, they will facilitate access to other important documents and in turn to government benefit programs, housing, and employment. In short, the amendments have huge potential to improve transgender New Yorkers' lives. A growing list of states and the federal government have adapted policies that allow recognition of a transgender person's sex on identity documents without requiring proof of genital surgery. In May of 2014, the New York City Department of Health removed its surgical requirement for correcting gender on birth certificates for the entire state except for New York City. Within New York City government, there is already precedent for such a policy. The forthcoming New York City Municipal Identification Card will allow individuals to self-designate their gender regardless of their sex assigned at birth and without proof of medical treatment. Like others who've testified, Nylai supports one proposed change to the rule. We believe that provider affidavits should be accepted from licensed master social workers. As a practical matter, LMSWs are the providers who are most likely to have direct patient contact. Transgender people are often unable to access adequate medical care due to a combination of discrimination, poverty, and lack of health insurance. Transgender people are less likely to have health insurance, employer-based, or public, and are more likely to delay medical treatment due to discrimination and/or inability to pay. In light of these factors, LMSWs provide primary mental health care to a large portion of the transgender community. The Health Department should mirror the proposal by City Council and include LMSWs among the list of healthcare providers qualified to submit affidavits. Nylai strongly supports the proposed amendments. Transgender people are among the most vulnerable residents of New York City and desperately need access to accurate identification, starting with accurate birth certificates. Thank you for taking this critical step. We urge you to adopt the proposed rules.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, our order is broken when the electeds come, so the next speaker is Councilmember Johnson.
My name is Councilmember Corey Johnson. I represent the 3rd Council District in Manhattan, and I am chair of the Council's Committee on Health. I am here to testify in strong support of the proposed rule before the Board of Health to amend subsection 8.5 of section 207.05 of the Health Code. This amendment would remove the requirement that individuals undergo convertive surgery in order to amend the sex designation on their birth certificate. The current process for amending the gender marker on birth certificates is antiquated and does not recognize the reality of the large majority of transgender individuals who were born in New York City. Having such a critical document that correctly reflects your gender identity is a basic human right that too many transgender people have been denied for far too long, and I commend the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene and the Board of Health for undertaking this change. As you know, I have introduced legislation, introduction number 491, that mirrors this amendment, and introduction 491 and the Health Code amendment this body is considering today would permit individuals to amend the gender marker on their birth certificate by having a medical or mental health professional fill out an affidavit or affirmation attesting that the changed sex designation more accurately reflects the applicant's gender identity. This policy will be an incredibly important improvement over the 1971 policy. It would bring New York City in line with New York State, the federal government, and a handful of other states. It would also go further than others by providing an expansive pool of medical and mental health professionals who can attest to an individual's gender. Moreover, it moves beyond the idea that transgender people need treatment in order to have basic rights. Birth certificates are living documents that are used in many contexts to prove identity, age, and citizenship. They are often the only form of identification that low-income New Yorkers have when applying for jobs or public benefits. Currently, individuals must present proof of sex reassignment surgery to change their birth certificate, presenting an insurmountable barrier to the vast majority of transgender native New Yorkers who do not undergo surgery and are therefore prevented from having accurate birth records. Many transgender people face discrimination, harassment, and in some cases, violence just for expressing who they are. As the Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Community Center has noted, transgender people are at risk for substantial social stigma and developmental disruptions, creating a cascade of lifelong difficulties with health, educational attainment, and economic productivity. Birth certificates can be a foundational trigger of this negative cascade. Without a birth certificate that accurately reflects their gender identity, transgender people are routinely forced to disclose their transgender status, resulting in increased difficulty accessing critical services and opportunities for employment, educational opportunities, and financial services like lines of credit to medical and life insurance policies, marriage licenses, driver's licenses, social security benefits, and other government benefits. They are denied jobs, healthcare, and other services, and face daily situations that are uncomfortable, embarrassing, and even threatening. It is appalling what these individuals go through just because of who they are. We have a chance to help start to reverse that situation, which is why I urge the Board of Health to adopt this proposal. We have come a long way as a society in recognizing the human rights of people regardless of their gender, sexual orientation, race, religion, or national origin. Sadly, however, gender identity is an area where our country and the city performs poorly. Transgender people comprise one of the most disenfranchised communities, and the statistics reflecting this reality are astounding. According to the National Transgender Discrimination Survey, 40% of transgender people have faced harassment when presenting identity documents that do not match their gender identity or expression. The kinds of stories and experience I've heard over the years and in last week's Health Committee hearing led to introduction 491 reflect these harsh realities. As one young transgender man shared in last week's City Council hearing, transitioning is one of the most private things a person may go through, but being a transgender person often feels like having to disclose this private information to everyone around you. I have heard from people whose lives have been impacted in so many ways beyond just access to services and benefits. People are taunted, abused, stigmatized, outed, and have their privacy invaded in countless ways. This proposal is in line with contemporary medical and mental health professional standards. Numerous professional organizations have advocated policies that do not tie surgery to gender designation on identification documents, including the American Psychological Association, the World Professional Association for Transgender Health, National Association of Social Workers, American Academy of Family Physicians, National Commission on Correctional Healthcare, American Public Health Association, and American College of Obstetricians and Medicologists. In order for transgender people to be able to amend this critical document, we need to ensure that transgender people have broad access to a comprehensive array of health and mental health professionals. The legislation which I have introduced overlaps with the proposal before the Board in every way except one: the inclusion of the Council's version of licensed master social workers among those who are going to attest to a person's gender with the purpose of amending the applicant's birth certificate. This is a crucial difference, and it is incumbent upon the Board to include this in their proposal. A byproduct of this community's poverty and marginalization means that many may not have access to a range of health and mental health providers. Last week, an NASW testified that approximately half of the licensed social workers in New York City have an LMSW. Cost is also a major issue. The Transgender Legal Defense and Education Fund, for example, has testified that only 2/3 of their transgender clients are on Medicaid or other public assistance and have annual incomes of less than $10,000, and 84% of their clients have income less than $20,000. Permitting LMSWs to make attestations will ensure broad access. I'm thrilled to work with Dr. Bassett and her extraordinary I'm thrilled to work with Dr. Bassett and her extraordinary team at DOH and H, that includes all of you. Thank you very much. This has been a great collaboration, and I can't wait for this change to take effect so we can turn to the work of operationalizing this new policy. There will be many opportunities to collaborate on working with the advocacy community, providers, transgender people, to make this change a reality. I again want to thank and commend the Department and the administration for making this progressive step, and I urge the Board to adopt this rule with amendment to include LMSWs among the professionals that can make these attestations. Thank you again for your time and consideration, and I again want to thank you, Tom, and both of you, and Dr. Bassett for accomplishing this in our first year working together. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, Councilmember. Our next speaker is number thirteen, A.J. James.
My name is Anna James, A.J. Whitfield, and I am a student member of the New York City Bar Association's Committee on LGBT Rights, and I've been authorized to present this statement on behalf of the committee. The proposed amendments to Article two oh seven of the City Health Code will bring the standards for New York City-issued birth certificates in line with not only contemporary healthcare standards, but also with policies of other city agencies and with a growing number of jurisdictions across the country. These amendments recognize the diversity of transgender experience and the personal nature of medical and surgical decisions as primary reasons to undo the quote-unquote "convertive surgery" condition for correcting the gender listed on a city-issued birth certificate. The committee has submitted written comments supporting the current amendment as proposed. Although we urge the Department of Health to add licensed master social workers to the list of providers whose affidavits can support a gender marker correction due to the fact that LMSWs provide primary mental health care to a large portion of the transgender community, the change of standard overall is one that will allow transgender people born in this great city to hold our heads a little higher. Thank you.
Now, we're going to double back. Mr. Michael Silverman, the miss being called in order about three seconds. So he knows he's here.
Good morning, and I'm sorry to have missed my spot earlier. I'm glad to be here. Sorry. I am glad to be here this morning. I am executive director of the Transgender Legal Defense and Education Fund. I've had the pleasure and opportunity to testify before some of you before, and glad to be here. It's nice to see you. I have submitted longer form testimony, and I'm just going to make some off-the-cup comments to help out the proposal, but I encourage you to read our full proposal. As I think some of you know, we're a nonprofit office located here in New York City and we work for transgender people, rising against discrimination against the transgender community. You had the opportunity to hear chief plaintiffs in the lawsuit that we filed, and the lawsuit challenges New York City's surgery requirement for transgender people to correct their birth certificate. That lawsuit was filed against this department and against the Board of Health. Maz, Abby, and Marco told you their story, and they hinted at the importance, I didn't mention more than they did, really highlighted the importance of the lawsuit. They didn't sue anyone here or the Board in any sense of personal animosity, but because of their deep and abiding belief that the converted surgery requirement serves no useful governmental purpose, in fact, serves only to harm transgender communities by discrimination against discrimination can never be a legitimate government interest, and we are extremely supportive of our efforts, two thousand, again, to remove the converted surgery requirement from the Health Code. We provide direct legal services to a project called the Name Change Project, and Councilmember Johnson hinted at some of the data that we've collected, and I think that data is important for what we're talking about here. We've served sixteen hundred community members through that project. We provide free legal name change services to transgender community members receiving the brain layer, getting the documents, and lines where they truly are. The data we've collected shows that our clients are overwhelmingly poor. Two-thirds, in fact, do receive Medicaid or another form of public assistance due to a undue report and annually less than ten thousand dollars per year. Most of the clients under ten thousand dollars per year have no identifiable source of income whatsoever, who simply don't calculate or track the incomes at such a finite level. The ones who drop to the ten thousand, they're essentially saying that they're close to zero. Eighty-four percent, the vast majority of our clients, must serve an effort less than twenty thousand dollars per year. Two-thirds of the clients in this project are people of color. They are, for us, a self-selected group who are coming to us for this particular kind of help, but there is no question that they are marginalized even within the larger transgender community. Most of the people that come to us, in fact, virtually all of the people who come to us, have not had the surgeries that are complicated, that are contemplated by the converted surgery requirement in the current Health Code. And that's important for a couple of reasons. In general, four people are much more likely to rely on birth certificates as a fundamental base and form of identification. Clients show up in our offices with their birth certificate, and so, however torn, tattered, zirons, et cetera, they may be, that is the form of identification that they have, that is the form of identification that they use to do basic everyday things that most of us take for granted. Those things would include, for example, applying for jobs, or they're required to fill out I-9 forms from the federal government to demonstrate that they are eligible for work in this country. Birth certificates are one of the documents that they can use to satisfy their requirements of the I-9. So for them, this change is about day-to-day basic ability to interact with society fully, rather than expect that that's it, as we can access services and benefits most of us take for granted as part of the big year. The last time we visited this issue, it was two thousand and six, and a long time has passed, and what seemed potentially momentous at the time seems almost mundane now, and that's because of all the changes that have taken place. We've seen things like the American Medical Association coming on board, stating that the fact is their belief that transgender people should be able to access things like identification because the surgery requirements that are contemplated in statutes like New York City simply aren't necessarily related to whether someone is male or female and should be recognized as such. And of course, New York is joining a lot of companies now, and not just there. States like California, states like New York, Oregon, Vermont, Washington, Iowa, the District of Columbia, and of course, the federal government, which includes things like social security and passports, has long jettisoned the converted surgery requirement. In closing, by echoing what some of my colleagues have said, we too support the addition of licensed master social workers to the list of providers who can pull out this affidavit to come back again to who our clients are and their socioeconomic circumstances. It's extremely difficult for them to access healthcare at higher levels that's expensive, insurance often won't cover it. And so adding LMSW is going to make accessing the new policy much easier for our clients. With that, I just want to say thank you, Ann, and thank you for being here.
Thank you for coming. We've got your list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the room who hasn't spoken who wishes to speak? I would, or we don't even know. We're going to adjourn. It's now eleven oh five. What we'll do is we'll adjourn for half an hour, so we'll come back here at eleven thirty ten. And now being twelve oh five, and there being no further speakers who've shown up, we are going to adjourn publicly.